We are starting on time, which is very unusual. Calling the 7:30 Town Council meeting to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call Ms. LeBrow.
Ms. Blanks.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Ms. Fay.
Here.
Mr. Gold.
Present.
Ms. Kerrigan is absent. Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mr. Winograd. And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. We will begin with a proclamation. There actually is no one present right now to receive this proclamation, but I will be participating in a walk at Elizabeth Park this weekend at 9:00 a.m. to support domestic violence, fight against domestic violence with Mayor Bronin and the Interval House. So there is also several events this month marking the awareness and the education of domestic violence, which has been a really, a real struggle for years, but especially in this pandemic. But to the proclamation, whereas the health and vitality of a community is reflected in the participation of its citizens in those activities that further the strength of the town, and whereas domestic violence was considered a family issue for far too long and was left for families to address privately, whereas domestic violence is an abuse of power that tears apart the fabric of relationships and families and undermines the well-being of communities, and whereas on average, 24 people per minute are victims of rape, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States, which totals 12 million women and men over the course of a year, and approximately 15.5 million children are exposed to domestic violence every year, and whereas in just one day, across the United States and its territories, nearly 75,000 victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters. On that same day, there were more than 9,000 requests for services, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation. However, domestic violence programs lack the resources to meet victims' needs, and whereas we encourage domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from appropriate victim service organizations such as Interval House, as well as services provided by state victim service advocates. In the past year, Interval House has helped 176 victims in West Hartford, and the total number of contacts was 506 individuals. Whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, yet it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each whose number-one thing adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming our community. Now therefore proclaim that on behalf of the Town Council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sheri G. Cantor, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. I call on all residents to speak out against domestic violence and to support efforts to educate young people about healthy relationships centered on respect, to support victims and survivors in your own families and networks. And often people wear purple in support of this mission. So again, this is a really, really important mission. I will add that we in West Hartford have partnered with Interval House to embed an advocate with our police that have helped many victims and their families and hopefully make a very big difference before the problem becomes worse. So with that, we will go to 3A. Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move approval of the minutes from the public hearings on September 14th and September 28th, and the Town Council meeting on September 28th, 2021.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any objections? Seeing none, the motion is adopted. Number four, we have a sign-up sheet. I don't know if there is anyone that has signed up. The sign-up sheet is for residents writing to something that's on the agenda that's not subject to a public hearing. Ms. LeBrow, have you received any?
There were none.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I think David did sign up, but it was to something not on the agenda. We did discuss it, and if need be, he'll sign up another time to speak. Okay, so that's that. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to something on the agenda? Okay. Number five, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that we place items 7A and 7B, 11A and 11B, 12A and 12B, and 14A on the consent calendar.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any objections? There being no objections, the motion is adopted. Number seven, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move-
Nope, 7A, I'm sorry. So 7C, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 7C, I move adoption of a resolution authorizing the Town Manager to participate in the Brownfield Municipal Grant Program to support the environmental remediation and redevelopment of 1051-1061 New Britton Avenue.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Hart, would you like to give us some information on this?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. So just a little background on this item. As the council knows, our state, our Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, DECD, has an office, trying to get my glasses right here, has an Office of Brownfield Remediation and Development that administers the municipal Brownfields Grant Program. And the purpose of this program, which has been around for several years now, is to provide grants to municipalities, primarily to municipalities, but other entities such as land banks and economic development agencies to assist with remediating brownfields and putting them back in good, in productive use and back on the tax rolls. It is a competitive grant program. And DECD has just announced a new round of grant funding they hadn't in a little while, and applications are due on October 22nd. So municipalities are the ones that are eligible to apply to this program, and private entities cannot. The way the program works is that the municipality applies for the grant, and if they are awarded a grant, they pass the proceeds along to the developer through what's called a pass-through or a sub-recipient agreement. So in order to take advantage of this round of funding, we're proposing to submit an application to support a redevelopment project at 1051-1061 New Britton Avenue, which, as we know, is the former site of Puritan Furniture, and it is now owned by NASRA WH LLC, or Nazra West Hartford LLC. So the grant, the grant would provide financial assistance to the developer to support, to fund the costs related to the environmental remediation and redevelopment of the site. And there is some contamination there, and the site is, to some extent, underutilized. So what is Nazra West Hartford proposing to do? So they are proposing a mixed-use, mixed-income, transit-oriented development project for that site. Very, very exciting. You know, we can't get into the particulars this evening. That will appear before the council at a later point. But it will feature apartments. They will maintain the ground-floor retailer, Ashley Home Store. They're also contemplating a proposed restaurant tenant. So, you know, a mixed, a mixed-use development, which, which we're very, very excited about, and we think would have many benefits for that area, for Elmwood itself, as well as the town overall. So the sum of money that we're seeking under this application would total approximately $954,000. Again, that's to assist with remediation costs. The town needs to be the official applicant, and we would pass the proceeds along to the developer through a sub-recipient agreement, and the developer would need to assume all of the liabilities associated with, with the grant requirements. So we're, we're excited about this application. Normally, we would have taken this through your Community Planning and Economic Development Committee, but because we didn't have much time with the, the grant notice period, we're bringing this directly to, to the council and requesting your support.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hart, any questions or comments from Mr. Hart? Ms. Blanks?
Mr. Hart, for the information. So it sounds like a wonderful idea in terms of what you just described, apartments on top, the retail shop in terms of the furniture store being on the bottom, and adding a restaurant. Since the time that furniture store moved in and Puritan moved out, have they done any type of upgrades? And would that be also be incorporated with the developer in this application? Or the application, you know, to, for the grant to receive the funds to do this overall project?
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Mr. Hart?
Yes, thank you. I believe to date they have only made minimal improvements to the existing facility. You know, they've tried to utilize the existing footprint to the extent possible. The, the monies that they're applying for can only be used for remediation expenses. So they, any work that they might have done that's not environmental-related would not be eligible under this funding source. It's only for work related to the environmental cleanup.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Anything? No, but we would expect that this remediation help would then spur potential further investment.
Yes, yes. So this, this would be significant assistance to the applicant and enable them to move forward with the redevelopment.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will, we can do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Anybody recusing? Oh, thank you. All right. So this is passed unanimously. Okay. And then we can go to 7C. So then it would be reports from the Town Manager. Mr. Hart?
Thanks again, Mayor. So I have attached my report for the council. Let me just hit some key items. First, under Council Business and Meetings, we've got one coming up in a couple of days. The Human and Community Services Committee is going to hold a virtual meeting at 8:00 a.m., excuse me, on Thursday morning. Next week, we're gonna, we've got two council committee meetings scheduled. One on Tuesday night, the 19th, that's the Finance and Administration Committee. The second would be Thursday, the Community Planning and Economic Development Committee. And then the Town Council would meet again on the 26th, and we will have a public hearing on, on the 26th. Couple key items under Staff Reports. Getting a lot of questions about our indoor mask mandate, understandably, because our numbers have significantly improved, and we're very pleased, pleased about that. So here in town, we have been following the guidance that's been established by the Capital Region Council of Governments Public Health Section. That's comprised of public health personnel, guidance as to when we would remove our mask mandate. And the criteria are twofold in order to remove or lift the mandate. So what this section is recommending, number one, is that county-level transmission, as defined by the CDC, is sustained for a four-week period in the low or moderate range. We are now in the moderate range. And then the second prong, equally as important, is that at the town level, our infection rate, as defined by the Connecticut Department of Public Health, is sustained for four consecutive weeks at nine cases per 100,000 residents or fewer, which would put us in the yellow zone. And we just reached that category as well. So we received some very good news with the state's report that was published on October 7th. County-level transmission is now in the moderate range. The town's infection rate is in the yellow zone at 9.5 cases per 100,000 residents for one reporting period. That's two weeks. Again, we're seeking four. The state will issue its next report on October 21st. So we're certainly making very significant progress towards reaching these benchmarks. We're going to be meeting with our team tomorrow to discuss next steps and consulting with the mayor towards the eventual removal of the mandate. So we will certainly keep the council and the community informed of our plans, but we're making excellent, excellent progress in recent weeks. Moving on, an item, two items from Community Development that I would like to touch on. First, very excited to announce that the construction of Phase 5 of the Troutbrook Trail will begin in another week or two. And the Engineering Division, as they normally do, they will conduct a virtual public information meeting to discuss the project, and they're going to hold this one on Wednesday, October 13th at 6:00 p.m. The Phase 5 portion of the trail runs between Farmington Avenue and Fern Street, and as the council knows, it will be located on state and town-owned land. And we do expect to complete Phases 3, 5, 6, and 7 of the trail by late next year, 2022, or early 2023. And again, the trail will run from New Park Avenue to Asylum Avenue, and something the town has been working on for many years with the support of the Town Council. Next item, and I believe I mentioned this previously, the outdoor dining corrals in the center and Blueback Square, we are planning to remove them on Monday, October 25th. We did send out notice to our business community. We are removing them just a little bit earlier than we did last year, and that's in order to accommodate utility work that's planned in, in that area. And as, as an aside, the MDC has now begun to repave Farmington Avenue, starting at the intersection of Troutbrook and moving west. So I know it's been a very rough stretch of road over the past year or so in order to accommodate all the utility work. The utility work is complete, and now the MDC will pave over it, and it'll be a much, much improved surface. Just, just a couple of additional things. Sorry, it's a somewhat lengthy report this evening. From the Fire Department, it's Fire Prevention Week, and certainly the pandemic has presented some challenges with how we conduct our public safety education. But like everyone else, you know, we're adopting a virtual model, and really want to credit and thank our Fire Marshal's Office for creating a Teachers Resource Section online. And also, the Fire Marshal's Office has partnered with West Hartford Community Interactive to create a virtual fire station tour, and it's going to air on our, on WHCI and on YouTube. So would like to thank Fire Inspector Marcia Adele, Aaron Brown from the IT Department, and Jennifer Evans from WHCI for their, for their great work there. Moving on to the Health District. The Health District is busy, as they do every year, providing flu shot clinics, and they've also produced a handy flyer on the three major COVID-19 vaccinations and information regarding booster shots. I did post that online here, but I also provide the council with a hard copy at, at your places. Moving on from Leisure Services, very pleased to welcome Ms. Rebecca Sears as the new supervisor of both senior centers. And Rebecca comes to us with 27 years of experience in geriatrics and aging with a focus on advocacy and education, very, very familiar with West Hartford, so she's able to hit the ground running. From Public Works, we've, will be beginning our annual leafbag collection program, starting on November 1st, and that will run through December 17th. And that, under, under that program, as you know, homeowners can bag their leaves, put them at the curb, and they can also use their, their yard waste barrel for that purpose. That's a program we do each and every year. And then last, but certainly not least, from the Town Clerk, absentee ballots for the November 2nd election are now available. And there are a handful of reasons why someone can request, someone can request an absentee ballot. I'm not going to read through all of those, but the applications are available online on our website, and we also have hard copies available at a select number of town buildings, the Town Hall lobby. Someone can obtain one at the Noah Webster Library, at the Faxton Library, and the Bishop's Corner Library. And we really encourage people to drop off their application at one of our election drop boxes located at the Town Hall, Faxton Library, or they could mail it to the Clerk's office, but, but our strong recommendation is to drop it off in, in the box. And if you sent in your application by October 1st and you haven't received it by October 14th, if you did not receive it by October 14th, excuse me, please contact our Clerk's office now so that we can inquire as to the status of your application. That completes my report, Mayor. I know I covered a number of items. Happy to take any questions council members may have.
I was just trying to answer all the questions ahead of time. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Williams has a question, I see.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Town Manager, I appreciate the report and also the update on the mask issue. You know, it's an issue that you and I have talked about a lot, and I know it's an important decision. Sometimes we've been on the other side of it, but I appreciate the thoroughness of your report and sort of setting out the framework for the factors you'd be looking to in order to lift the mandate. I just want to understand the county piece. So if you go on the map, the state website map of the COVID cases now, in Hartford County, we have yellow municipalities like us now, which I think is pretty remarkable because we are a city, you know, in many respects. And I think we're out, out, I don't know what the word is, we're outperforming a lot of our contemporary municipalities in terms of our, our rate of infection. But there's a lot of red in the counties, in the county. So when you say we're looking at the moderate, we're looking at moderate infection rates for the counties, the county to be consistent over, you know, four-week period, is that, is that the red, yellow, green framework we're, we're working in, or is that a different description? Do you see what I'm saying?
It is, it is a different description. I understand, you know, the, the distinction there. So the county, the county-based metric, that's promulgated by the CDC, and the primary categories are low, moderate, and substantial. And it's a, it's a higher metric. You're looking at the average across the county overall. So we are, we have fallen to the moderate, moderate category, which is good. You know, we were, we were in that, in that substantial category for several weeks and, and months. So we have, in one more reporting period, we will have four weeks at the desired county level target as well.
All right, I appreciate the explanation and, you know, understand that it's, it's a decision not made lightly. So even though we've had disagreements, I appreciate the perspective you had and the explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Gold, did I see your hand up?
I did, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a real quick, maybe just clarification. Thank you for letting us know about the dining corrals relative to additional. It is. I think Mary's is as well.
Sorry.
I just get doubly heard. It's good. Relative to the dining corrals being removed, are we still, maybe you can comment on outdoor dining and its applicability across the town and other areas, in parking lots and things of that nature, whether or not that is going to be maintained and continued?
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Mr. Hart?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Gold, for your good question. Yes, restaurants can still engage in, in outdoor dining. We will continue to provide designated short-term parking spaces in the center and in Blueback Square to facilitate that. But, you know, restaurants, as long as they are comfortable providing outdoor dining as late into the season as they're comfortable doing so, you know, we, we will work with them to, to facilitate that. But we just have to remove the infrastructure that's in the street so that we can complete the utility work and, and conduct snow removal operations as necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Gold, anything else? No? Okay. Oh, Ms. Fay.
Yes. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Hart, thank you. That was a great report. I, I'm still learning the ropes in terms of procedures. So I had submitted, along with Chris and others, the anti-crime resolution that was approved by three local communities, Rocky Hill, Newington, and Weathersfield. I believe the reason it's not on the agenda, and I just want to understand for future purposes, is because I didn't make it within the seven-day window. Is that correct?
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Mr. Hart?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank, thank you for your, your question and, and presenting that. Counselor Fay, let me start off, and if, if he would like, Corporation Counsel Dodge can, can elaborate. Yes, your request came in after we had already prepared and, and posted the agenda, and the agenda, under our rules, needs to be approved. The, the content of the agenda needs to be approved by the mayor, the Town Manager, and, and Corporation Counsel.
May I? Ms. Hart? Yeah, sure, Ms. Fay. I'm sorry. Mr. Dodge is raising his. Mr. Dodge was going to add something.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The issue wasn't so much a matter of the, of when the agenda was posted, it was the timing of when the request was received and when anything could have been added to the agenda. So the agenda was filed on October 5th. The request to add the item came on October 6th. Once an agenda is posted, it belongs to the entire council. And actually, under the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act, it's not possible to add items to an agenda that's already been- add items to an agenda that's already been filed, except by a two-thirds vote at the meeting. And so as we decide, as we discuss, Councilor Fay, if you wished to make a suspense motion to add the item to the agenda this evening, you would be, that would that would be an option available to you. But the problem was that the agenda had already been filed, and so it could not be posted or it couldn't be added at that point. And just as a point of clarification, under our rules, the agenda is actually set solely by the mayor, is done in consultation with the town manager. I actually have no role in setting the agenda. But the mayor determines the agenda, determines what items are going to be included on the agenda in consultation with the town manager. And then any councilor is free to make a motion to add further items to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Okay, Ms. Fay?
Yes. I, it's backwards. Okay, sorry. Red is stop. Okay, so just to understand a little bit more fully, clearly, this is not just me who wants this on the agenda. It's a it's a very popular item discussed among our constituents who want to see some action or see us do more than say we're going to talk to our legislators. So may I, and again, I don't know the protocol. I'm trying to be fair and clear and transparent. May I put this on the or request to put this on the agenda now for two weeks from now?
Ms. Fay, Mr. Dodge just raised his hand, so we're going to defer to him for a minute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Councilor Fay, my suggestion would be, because we are currently in the middle of the town manager's report, and I think some council, I'm not sure whether other councilors have additional questions for him, that we conclude this agenda item. And then after the conclusion of the manager's report, at that time, if you want to make a suspense motion to add your item to the agenda, I think it would be appropriate at that time. But I would suggest concluding the town manager's report right now, and then we could proceed to the suspense motion.
Understood. But may just to be a little bit more finer point on this, I'm not asking to suspend the rules to bring this forward now. I'm asking to ensure to give everybody around this table and others the opportunity to review it in full and discuss it, that it appears on the agenda two weeks from now in a formal way that didn't make somebody, didn't force somebody to suspend the rules, because I really don't want to do that. That's that what I'm asking for. I hope that's clear. Is that clear?
The the motion, in that case, you know, your your discussion would really be with the mayor at that point in terms of whether it's the president of the council, she wished to add it or to include it on the agenda in two weeks. Like I said, you could move it by suspense tonight and deal with it that way, or you could request that it be added in two weeks.
If you, I want to be as transparent, obvious, and and through the procedures as possible. I didn't realize there was a delay. I'm just trying to really comply. But this is very urgent and important. So may I suggest, I am not going to make a suspend the rules motion. I just don't think that's right. It's very up to some people to understand that. So I would prefer to work with Ms. Cantor to get this on in two weeks. And that's all I really have to say, but it is urgent and important. So that was my, you know, expedience for putting it forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fay. Are there any questions for Mr. Hart, Ms. Wenigrad?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hart, just a clarification. Your comments on the absentee ballot application, you noted there are various reasons why one might ask for absentee ballot. But in fact, this year, the COVID, the special rules are still in effect. So COVID is, in fact, a reason this year for one to request an absentee ballot, and therefore, it is in fact available to all voters, since we all have the potential of COVID exposure. Is that correct?
Mr. Hart, thank you, Ms. Wenigrad. Mr. Hart?
Yes, thank you. Happy to add additional detail there. So as Councilor Wenigrad stated, for this year, COVID-19 may be used as a valid reason for requesting a ballot for any primary election or referendum held before November 3, 2021, which is a day later. And other acceptable reasons for voting by absentee ballot, and these are the traditional ones, include an absence from town, illness or disability, religious beliefs that prevent someone from performing secular activities on that day, or serving on active duty in the armed forces.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. But yeah, again, that COVID is as in.
Correct. That's what is distinct this year, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Wenigrad. Anything else?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wenigrad. Mr. Davidoff?
Just to add a little more to this drop box, I want people to be perfectly clear, and you can please confirm this, Mr. Manager, that you can put your application in the drop boxes, you also can put your ballots in the drop boxes, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And in fact, it's encouraged because of the mail and inaccuracies and unexpected delays potentially in mail. Right? Okay. Anything further for the town manager? All right. So then we go to announcements. Just to follow up on the announcements, so the there was a list on the Interval House website on activities for domestic violence awareness and prevention. But again, this Saturday at 8:30 registration, 9 o'clock, there's a 30-minute walk sponsored by, the co-chairs are Luke Bronin and myself, Mayor Bronin and myself, Dennis House and Kara Sunderland will be there. And this is through Interval House, and this is named, called the Jennifer Farber-Dulos Memorial Walk to End Domestic Violence at Elizabeth Park. There's also breakfast with champions honoring the Interval staff, which also will take place on Thursday morning, October 21st, at 8:00 AM. Advance registration is required. And and also, if you visit the Interval House, there's Purple with a Purpose, and there's other activities. So I just wanted to follow up on that. Park Road Parade winners were announced, and that was really wonderful to be together and outside and enjoying the Park Road Parade, thanks to Darlene Zoller and Rick Fountain of Playhouse on Park, who served as emcees and judges. The 2021 winners are Best Float Friends of Feeny, Best Overall Performance Connecticut Heart Cheer, Best Community Spirit A Strand Ahead, Best Costumes Peruvian Arts and Crafts, and Best Musical Performance The Heart School Brazilian Samba Band. West Hartford Art League needs artists for its Holiday Crafts Sale. If you create jewelry, basketry, prints, or arts or other mediums, here's your chance to show and sell your work. The event is open to artists age 18 and older. Categories also include poetry, jewelry, graphic artists, printmaking, basketry, books, paper, fiber, textiles, et cetera. The dates of the holiday sale are November 19, 20, 26, 27, and also December 3 and 4. For details, go to the Art League website. Also have events. Japan Fall Festival is Sunday, October 17th. This will be Saturday, October 17th. I think that's a Sunday, though, because I thought that's Saturday. Hmm, okay. It says Saturday, 3 to 5, in Blueback Square. Maybe we can check on that. Saturday, October 17th, from 3 to 5 PM at Webster Walk at Blueback Square. The main event is at 4:30, Powerful Drumming Performance by So Daiko of New York. The festival also features Shishimai, Shishimei, am I, I'm sorry, when traditional lion dancing and koto performance, Japanese folk tales. The Japanese, Japan Society of Greater Hartford will have Japanese gifts and crafts and items for sale. Halloween Stroll will take place on October 3rd. It's back. Costume children of all ages invited to join a fun morning in West Hartford Center in Blueback Square. And this again is 10 to 11:30. It says PM on here. I think that's AM, I would think. And the rain date is Sunday, October 24th, also 10 to 11:30 AM. Children are, that'll be wild. Children are welcome to wear costumes and/or trick-or-treat at participating merchants. The free event also features live music. Rotary Club of West Hartford's 18th Annual Jazz Brunch, October 31st. This will take place from noon to 4:00, and it will be held at the Delamar Hotel. Net proceeds benefit West Hartford's Gifts of Music Program and town charities. Tickets are $100 per person or $9.50 for a table of 10. Seating is limited to 200, and tickets are sold on a first-come, first-served basis. For more information to buy tickets, please contact Tony Rodriguez at 860-573-0440, or tonyr@danielpenn.com. West Hartford United Methodist Church Pumpkin Festival, October 23rd. It's an outdoor festival on the grounds of the church on the corner of Berkshire and New Britton Avenue, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Rain date is also Sunday, October 24th. Event features its popular bakery booth, vendors, games, and activities for children, including a visit from the fire department, a month-long food drive to support local food pantry, and of course, the pumpkin sale on the front lawn to support the church's mission programs. Admission is free. An online silent auction opens October 15th with bedding through October 24th. To access the auction, go to biddingowl.com/pumpkinfestival to preview items. Noah Webster Real Ale Harvest Fest, November 6th, returns on, this is on that Saturday, with beer sampling you cannot find anywhere else. Brewers create a unique cask of real ale for this one-day event. With one stipulation, their brew must include an ingredient from Noah Webster's 18th-century garden or pantry. With over 100 items to choose from, such as quince, cinnamon, rhubarb, and nutmeg. The cask creations are both unique and tasty. This unique and exclusive event takes place on the grounds of the Noah Webster House 227 South Main. Each session includes unlimited samples served in a souvenir tasting glass. Each session will feature live music. Advanced sales are available for $50. Please go to the Noah Webster House YapCity.com site, and then at the door, they are $60. And that's all I had on my list. Is there anybody else that has any announcements? All right. Seeing none, we will go to Corporation Counsel's report. Mr. Dodge?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no formal report, and we will not require an executive session this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Any questions for Corporation Counsel? Seeing none, we then go to, consent, consent, 13, Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of the items on the consent calendar.
Voice has been, motion has been made, and second, all those in favor, aye. All those opposed, motion carries. There's no petitions, no executive session. Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move adjournment.
Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned. Good night.